Well, we don't want to do that because I'm going to say no, it's like now it's safe.
So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January twenty fourth. Um, meeting of the village board. This is a workshop meeting where we. And get get in few pieces of business done. Deputy Mayor is joining us. Remotely, but we have an in-person forum here in compliance with open meetings law and trustee. Is traveling, so it's the three of us. Um, announcements, Christmas trees.
Tomorrow and next Thursday.
Oh, two more pickups. Okay, great. Put it out tonight and pick up tomorrow or next Wednesday for the following.
And there will be no more.
Well, if you have a silver Christmas tree after that, we've got some other things to talk about. Okay. Opportunity to add, modify, add or modify an agenda item. Um, I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda. The contract for our IP contract with Members Technologies. We had originally planned to talk about it tonight. Trustee Frymark picked up some things that needed to be modified. They were actually able to turn it around faster than we thought, and it is ready to be reviewed. So if everyone's comfortable adding that to the agenda, I make that motion. Okay, so we're going to take things over to trustee Laura Bozzi, who is our lead on. Climate Smart and Clean Energy Communities.
Great, thanks. So I'm really excited to tell you all about this and get your feedback. Um, I will try not to like totally overwhelm you with all of the. I'm certainly in the weeds, so try to step back, but ask you for detail when I need it. Um, and so, next slide, please.
Do you want to?
Oh, if I can, yeah, yeah, then that'd be, yes, that works, that'd be great. Is there a, okay, so first, I can't see if there's an advance of the pages. Okay, I'll just make it. Um, so we're going to talk about the Clean Energy Community Program, which has been participating for a while. Um, this is through NYSERCA, and it's really meant to support municipalities to do good clean energy upgrades. Um, by providing funding and technical assistance. Um, so we already have, we received, this is just, I'll tell you what we've done so far. So we got a five thousand dollar grant. We used it to install LED lighting at the water plant. There was a little bit left, about five hundred dollars, so I'm working with the REC Commission to offer that funding to them. For their Palmyra Garden at the Tots Park. With the next five thousand dollar grant, we are planning to do a residential food scraps drop-off pilot program in coordination with Phillips Town. Um, I mean, they have a town advisory committee on this, and I'm meeting with them in early February. They'll find out more of the details of what, you know, what would be involved in this. Um, and we can start to look at a pilot, a site for this, um, on village property. So I'll plan to bring what I learned back, and we can talk about, um, what's a workable configuration for the village. Um, and then, uh, funding for the tree advisory board and Jen's. Then we put two ten thousand dollar grants together, one mostly for, for EV charging spots. Uh, so four ports on Main Street. Um, so want to talk for a minute about, you know, we've talked about this number of times, but the, we've looked at a number of locations and, um. The main street, kind of upper main street by the light. Near St. Mary's Lawn seems to be the most viable location, and so I want to hear, I, um, talked to the department heads and got some feedback. Um, Bugsy mentioned, um, snow, so I'm going to check with them and make sure that, I think that will be fine, but we'll, we'll check on, on snow issues. But any other feedback about that location or considerations, um, because we'll, we're getting into the contracting step. Anything from trustees on that piece?
I know you've looked at, uh, a number of different locations, right? And there's, there's various different, um, considerations that you've put in there. So, you know, that certainly seems to be the most central place, right? For, for the residents to, to charge at.
It, I, so I agree, and it also is, um, it's not a paid, they're not paid spaces except on the weekends. Um, which is also beneficial for residents versus the municipal lot that is paid twenty-four hours a day. Which, you know, can really add to your costs if you're, um, using it or even, um, you know, charging as a resident. Um, it also, I think, sends a good message when you come into the village, you know, we have a gas station right now as our entrance, and it'd be nice to have, you know, the EV chargers instead.
So, so this, this seems also to complement the two other locations that are in or near the village, right? One at the Butterfield Condos, and then another at the Phillips Towns Town Hall. Um, and this seems to be like a good equidistant from them.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're also trying to get them at the rec center, but, um, you know, which I think would be good to spread them out across town as well. Amazing. Um, great, any tweets, please? I can't see you, so just like chime in if you have questions or comments.
Will do.
Um, and then the energy audit, uh, so a meeting next week with NYSERCA to talk about that. Um, but Kathleen and I talked with the architect who's doing the existing conditions of Village Hall, and. Um, I think he's eager to see the results of it, and we're going to try to, he has a lot of data on the, on the building, and he's going to try to mesh that with the auditor. We'll try to have them meet at some point. And I'm going to, I will see why, I'm going to try to make that happen very soon. Um, if we can get that, get that energy audit, um, to be done quickly. And then, uh, we have a grant, uh, for five thousand dollars that we need to decide in the next month or so, uh, how to spend it. Um, and one possibility is to fund this mechanical, electrical, and plumbing study, uh, for Village Hall. And, um, we're already doing, already planning to do this. I have to say, I had. Expressed initially this morning, uh, kind of reservation of like, maybe it's too early for this to kind of comply, but after talking with the, the firm that is doing it. I think he's really going to focus on different options for heat pumps. There's like a bunch of different configurations and really think about what would that mean for the, for Village Hall. So I think it's actually a great use for this, five thousand dollars if others.
I agree, great, yeah.
Think that that's okay, and it's a, it's a very flex, the five thousand dollar ones are very flexible, so we just kind of qualitatively write what the, what that is.
We have to know off the top of our head how much the oil bill is annually.
So I need to, I need to get all of that data from.
Part of the study, I'm sure.
Uh, for the energy audit, I need, I need to pull all of it, so I'm going to be making some data requests to Michelle. We also have an aged boiler that needs to be replaced. And so the timing, there are lots of things coming together in, in, at one time that makes sense to think about together. Great.
An aged air conditioning system, aged as being generous.
It is, it's like, it's above us on the roof up here, it's like, always says the size of Volkswagen, because it kind of is.
Probably weighs more.
It probably weighs more. Um, so this, the gentleman that Laura is talking about, so Highlands Architects are the, are the, is the firm. Doing the existing condition survey. We have never had, um, floor plates for the village. We've never had, um, as-built drawings, which you need to do all of the next steps. So those are nearly complete. We looked at drafts today. Um, and then he is subcontracting with, um, Gerard Associates, which is a mechanical. Electrical and plumbing engineer to look at our systems envelope overall, and that's the spot that. We can, we can overlap with the NYSERCA, yeah, folks.
Generally speaking, I mean, this is fantastic. There's so much money coming to the village. Thanks, Sierra.
That's, oh, thank you. There's more.
Oh.
But wait, oh, wait, they weren't just getting started, except that I, struggling on, there we go. Um, okay, so, uh, I looked at all of the rankings of how we're doing, so this is a point-based system. I looked at the rankings, and we are tied for nine out of eight hundred and thirty cities, counties, towns, villages. Above New York City, above County of Westchester, you like, you name it, um, or at the top, which is amazing. Um, uh, and we should keep going. Um, this is important because, uh, they just announced new funding in December. Um, that puts all those five thousand and ten thousand dollar grants, just make them look measly. Um, so we have sixty-one hundred points, um, so we are guaranteed to get a hundred thousand dollars, which is amazing. Um, we are close to seven thousand, or then we get a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars more. And then if we worked really hard, we could get nine thousand points, and that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that is five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more that we could potentially get. The trick with this is that it's, um, it's basically a race against everybody else. Um, there, it's twenty-five million dollars total, sorry, for the whole state. Um. Uh, and so we're competing against all the other, you know, all these other municipalities that are eligible. Um, and the program, so first it, like, it steps down to a little bit smaller amounts at, in October of this year. And then it, and then it ends the end of twenty twenty-five, which is why, um, I'm really eager to get this work done quickly. Because it's just an amazing, it's an amazing opportunity, and, you know.
It's like mana.
It's, it's like mana, it's like mana.
What's, what's the form of the grant? It's actually, it's like, it's just a grant, it's just a check.
Well, it's a contract, so these small five thousand dollar ones, it's just a grant, we don't have to do any reporting.
Right.
Um, we're learning about the contract for the EV chargers. Um, so Michelle and I met, and it's a pretty straight, it's not as bad as the one that we did for the, um, the zoning code, I think, and, and Jeff looked at it. I mean, it's a pretty straightforward contract, um, but, uh, but we do, you know, and, and they pay maybe twenty-five percent in the end, and we have to submit paperwork. Um, but it's a, you know, it's a contract. Do you mean not as bad in terms of what we have to compile as a record for the contract?
Well, it's, I would avoid trying to compare it to what we did for zoning, because zoning was, there was just so much involved, it was so long. When that we entered into that contract with my sort of the zoning, you know. Yeah, so a lot has changed, so this is a lot more streamlined. The reporting, I mean, there's a lot of reporting, but we're not asking for, you know, we're not doing as much as we did with the zoning code, so. We don't have to supply as much, so a lot of this stuff is, is there, it's, it's paperwork on, it's fast time, but it's not as intense.
I would imagine that NYSERCA has learned a lot from those early grants that they made, and how, how they burdened themselves as well with the level of documentation. All right, so good, keep going. Uh, so, um, I want to talk with you about some initial ideas for this hundred thousand dollars, and I don't, I should have the timeline a little bit in my head, but. I think we'll find out in the next couple of months, we'll get the confirmation that we get this, and then we need to submit. We've no extensions, I think we get two months to then submit our proposal. And then from, once it's approved, and we have the contract, and maybe we have a year to complete. So it's pretty quick, which is why I'd like us to be like, ready to go of how we want to spend this. So, uh, and the way that I've been approaching all these grants is thinking about items that we already need, that are like asks in our budget. Um, things that might generate income, like the way that the EV chargers will generate income. Um, or, and things that we can identify and implement quickly because of the timeline of the grant, and because it will give us points to then get more grants. Um. I exploded this already, I think, uh, an F-150 Lightning, um, or other EV, um, light duty truck for water and wastewater will be amazing. Um, I know that Matt has been asking for a truck, and we couldn't fit it into the budget last year. Um, and he really needs one, he's willing to, to try, I think he's a great person to be the first one, you know, doing an EV, uh, for the village, and you can try it out. Um.
Can you scroll the, the, um, presentation up a little bit? Can't quite see.
Yep, there you go. Um, and I, so these are just ballpark, uh, I think it's about fifty-five thousand, then we would need to put an EV charging station at whichever plant he wants it at, water or wastewater. Um, so that would, we can, we'll work out, if this sounds like something that we're interested in, I can, um, look at. I'm sure that there's like a state, you know, we would purchase it through the state process and figure out what the cost is.
It was up to do to a state.
The state did. He also puts more miles on a vehicle, that team puts more miles on than anybody else, that they're driving out to the water treatment plant. In the, the village, yeah, currently out to Garrison. Um, and it adds up to a lot. Yeah, and yet, like, it had, like, a big, I don't know, three hundred, four hundred miles or something, it's a big range that he would never use that. If he plugged it in at night, every night, that he would never have to worry about it, um, like the range.
I think that that's a fantastic idea to get, to get something we do really need.
Yeah.
The only problem today is the time.
Like, yeah, yeah, order time, yeah, so we could find out all that.
That was, you know, the dump truck took us almost a year.
Yeah, that was closer to COVID, though, hopefully things, the supply lines have changed. Um, but it could be a, um, okay, check on lead time. Uh, Beacon has a bunch of EV police vehicles, I haven't heard any, and they, and they're buying more, so it must be successful. So that's another thing, I, I don't know what other vehicles are in the mix, um, this was the first one that I thought of. It's the most logical one, and we did talk about the possibility of electric vehicles for the police department, and. If they are newer and used for police departments, and. At the time, Larry's recommendation was, let's let some of the bigger departments that have more money to play with experiment and find. The brands, et cetera, that work better, and then when the technology is more broadly used in the field, bring them on here, and that made sense to me. But the truck is, um, I mean, there's lots of examples of utility trucks being used. Yeah, okay, great. Um, and then, uh, I'm starting to look at solar. Um, I just had a great call with the Air Power Authority, which is a quasi-governmental, um, agency. That, uh, does really amazing advising and like putting out to bid, and they kind of, they do like a concierge service on. Solar, also heat pump and, um, energy efficiency, and then they, you know, they just take a, a sort of percentage. Um, so they seem really good, um, they're going to do a feasibility, a simple feasibility study on all of our municipal buildings. Um, to give us a sense of what could be possible, what are the kinds of costs, and I think they would tell us things about payback and lease and the different options. So it'll just give us like, a little bit of what we're talking about here. I hadn't, um, I don't have a sense of scale of cost, I think it's probably more expensive than I want it to be. Um, so it'd be helpful to have that kind of information, and right now the only building is firehouse, right? With channels, with an array. The firehouse has panels now, doesn't it? I don't think so, no.
What was Michelle talking about?
Talking about either the sewer or the water. Water plant, we got concerns about because of the tree coverage.
Yeah.
There.
Maybe it was her saying, we should have it at the firehouse, and I, I wanted to hear her saying, we do have a good firehouse.
I, what she said is that the roof is newest there, and so it would make sense.
Yeah.
Um, there, you know, I'm also.
Nothing blocking it.
Yeah, 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 exactly, it is a good roof. Um, so I'm also really interested in the idea of having, um, storage, like solar and storage as backup power. Um, then we would need a place to site it, like, we'll, we'll kind of explore that, but that's an interesting idea for both of our, um, firehouse and Village Hall to have backup. Um.
Since the previous slide, you, you thought about doing a feasibility study for the heat pumps, is the thinking that heat pumps would, that process would probably be too slow to.
For the. Um, the installation of the heat pumps, I think it has, it's going to have to happen with all, or no, it's because there's. A lot of other upgrades to this building, and so we're going to have to wait for some of those to happen before you're doing the HX system. Um, I hope that the timing works out for some of the other grants, but it's a little hard to predict. I mean, one, a very basic thing that helps put it in perspective, there's no ductwork in the building. So the way heat pumps work is the movement of air around a building, so if we were. Upgrading, that would need to be part of the consideration, so then you come to, all right, if we're doing that, what are the other things that could be done at the same time that makes sense to improve? Other systems or improve the space, so it's a longer, it's a longer question that needs a deeper dive. That I think we can accomplish in the nicer of a timeframe. But we might be able to fund new windows or installation or things like that with these grants for this building, um, which I think would be good.
You haven't yet mentioned, and maybe you will, generator?
Oh, um. I, uh, there, so none of these grants, none of the Clean Energy Communities would fund, uh, like a fossil fuel generator.
No, but we don't have any generator on this building right now, and when you think about the storms we've been dealing with and making sure that the radios are charging and all of that. I'm wondering if a solar power, if there is any solar power generator.
Oh, that was, that's sorry, storage, storage is like a generator, it's like, uh.
Makes sense.
Yeah, 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 like battery, it's, um, big battery. That's powered, that's, um, from the EV panels or the solar panels.
And are they made currently at a, at a scale big enough to back up a building like this?
For that period of hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we'd have to figure out, they can't be on a building, as I understand, and so whether we have space for it here. Um, uh, yeah, that's a, the challenge of this building, bringing you in on this, is that we are built and, and new for, for Kelly. We are built right to the property line, we don't own any land around the building, just the building. And we have a five-foot maintenance easement on that side and right behind my office, but that's it. So we're really constrained on the site. But I'll find, I may also ask, maybe I'm, maybe they'll think of something clever. Um, and then the other thing to highlight is that the Inflation Reduction Act, the Federal Inflation Reduction Act, um. May, has great incentives for, um, residents, the businesses on things like, um, solar and. Energy efficiency and all that, they also made a change, so normally, you can't, since we don't pay taxes, we wouldn't be able to get the tax incentives. They made it so that it's direct payment, so, um, part of this, I believe, is that we would get a thirty percent direct payment for things like solar installation.
Is that this, is that this year?
I think it's for a number of years going forward, but, but this is part of what we need. New York Power Authority to tell more about it, I have like just cursory understanding of it. Um, okay, so how are we going to get to these other hundred seventy-five and two hundred fifty thousand? We need nine hundred more, very quickly. Um, we're wrapping up our EV community campaign, I'll make a pitch about that at the end. We're working on the municipal fleet inventory, so, um, working with, uh, Michelle and the other department heads to compile just with our existing fleet. How many miles does it have, what's the, so that's just kind of a simple exercise. Um, then, but those aren't enough, and then this is like the tricky part, so, uh, I'm going to talk about the climate smart bronze certification, um, in a minute. Uh, that will get us over, over the edge, but it's a bunch of work. Um, or we get the EV charger installation installed really quickly, and then, I don't even think that gets us there. Um, uh, no, it doesn't, uh, and then, uh, but if we, you know, were able to buy the, the EV for water wastewater quickly, the truck. Um, or install the charger, um, at the, one of the plants, all of those things could add up. So like, I'm playing this math and trying to, I'm trying to run on all of these things to see which ones. We can submit quick enough to then, yeah, you know, unlock the funding. And so this is why, like, when I'm making these, I sound kind of like hyper trying to move things forward, it's because there's a lot of money on the line, and it's really like, I want us to get it. Um, so, uh, and, you know, we talked about all of this, but these are, this is kind of a wish list of what we could do at Village Hall. Um, uh, with either the one seventy-five or the two fifty, if we get these, um, depending on the timing of getting the grant. Um, and, uh, um, you know, within the construction.
What, I assume there are very strict limits on how you can use this grant money, but, uh, could they be used for something like subsidies for solar for residents?
No, I should have, I should have written this out as a slide, there are very prescribed things, but I'll, so it's, um, electric vehicles, electric vehicle chargers. These are only for municipal use and on their land and all that kind of stuff. Um, heat, heat pumps, energy efficiency upgrades. Solar, um, electric landscaping equipment. Another thing we can think about, but not at all. Should I?
People hate about the gas-powered backpack blowers.
Yeah.
Well, the electric ones are fire.
It would, we're, we're likely to get a seventy-five hundred dollar grant in a cup, in a month or so, and definitely bring it. Um, put it toward that if he's willing to give it a shot.
And I know nothing about the equipment and how well it works compared, so it's, yeah, it's a discussion to have.
Yeah, yeah, well, we would get points if we had electric landscape equipment, so there you go, it's good for that, too. Okay, so now I wanted to talk about the climate smart communities. Um, it's through the Department of Environmental Conservation, it's been around for a long time, and we, um, we just joined. So we are one of four hundred and one registered communities in the state. Um, then you, so you're registered, and then you do a bunch of actions. And you compile all of the paperwork for it, and you submit it to the state, to DEC, and then they go through it, and they decide whether you get the points that you. Applied for, and if you get the right number of points, then you become bronze certified, there are a hundred and twenty-two of these, that's what we're working on. And then silver's really hard to get because there are only ten, um, but we could keep going towards that.
Phillips Town has bronze.
Phillips Town has bronze. Um, I, it's very doable, um, the next deadline to submit our application is April fifth, and that's what I'm aiming for. Um, but, uh. We'll see how that goes. Um, so I went through all of their tons of activities, it's much broader than clean energy, it's also about. Do you recycle, and are you planning for flooding, and do you do education with your residents? It's like, it runs the whole gamut, or did you, you know, inventory things? Um, so I went through them and was like, what are all the things that we've already done? And it was amazing how many things were, I'm so proud of us. Um, I have to say, a lot of, like, it's amazing, so a lot of it are, is, our, our new zoning code, like, checks so many. The smart growth policies, but, but like many more than that, the protection that we have of the, um, like protected areas of the steep slopes, like, you name it. Um, our amazing, um, forestry, um, tree advisory board. Uh, you know, um, our partnerships with other organizations or in other municipalities. So I've, I've already pulled together the documentation and uploaded it to the website. Um, so that it can, it's just kind of sitting there waiting for us to get enough points. Um. The two, there are two things that are required, one is to create a task force, and one is to name a coordinator, and so that's the resolution that we will consider tonight, and those will give us thirty points. Um, uh. I need to, um, I, our nature, so there's something about nature-based shorelines, and the work at, um, Dockside. Is exactly what they're talking about, but I couldn't find the documentation of like contracts or, or reports or things like our approval.
Um, so, because it's not, it's not ours, it's.
I don't think, I don't think that, I feel like, I feel like we could.
But it's within our boundaries.
I feel like we could find a way.
Justify, I think it could work, so, um, maybe I could chat with you about it.
Yeah, and there, there is a, there is a bunch of stuff on the website, but it, I don't know what, whether it's what you're looking for or not, we can figure out.
Okay, great, I found glossy designs and things like that on, on the website, okay, great. Um, I thought that our work around the merit, like the zoning that marathon would count for the brownfields. Um, not sure, there's a distinction between a state brownfield site and a super fun site, but now I understand, so. It's, but it's not, it wasn't clear, it's not on like the cleared list.
DEC?
Yeah. Maybe it's just we haven't gotten the, anyway, we'll check, okay. Um, it's for sure cleared on. Yeah, um, recycling bins in government buildings, it's not worth a lot of points, but I didn't know kind of what the status was of that. Um. Uh. I'll just highlight here, so I think some of these are small points, we need to do a couple of these big items. So one is a community greenhouse gas inventory, I'm doing a web, a webinar tomorrow, I hope that they are able to provide us with the data and the template. So that I can somehow pull this together quickly, uh, and hope to share that, uh, with you all, and I think we would then adopt it. And it will just tell, you know, an estimate of what are the, what are the climate emissions from the whole community, from all of the residents. Um, that'll be interesting, um, but, uh. We also need to do likely the government operations greenhouse gas inventory, which is like, what are the emissions from our village operations? Um, and so I think I can also accomplish that relatively slowly with some help from the, um, our.
By April?
Advisors, um, yeah, I just need, I basically just need, um, and this is why I'm being like quite optimistic. I think it, I think it's possible, um, uh, but I, I think I basically just need a bunch of Michelle's. Data and her good, um, tracking of our gasoline, you know, that we have, that, that we use, our electricity bills, our heating oil bills. Okay, I, you know, I think that, I think I can do it with that.
Quick math in my head, when you went through that, I mean, we're pretty close.
Okay, so the.
Once we, once we pass the resolutions tonight, that puts us pretty close to a hundred points as is.
So, okay, so the, here's the thing that I figured out after I made this presentation. It's not just the two required, there's two required, and then you have to do three priority actions. And I wasn't planning on doing three of them, so that's what makes the change, so. We, I'm planning to do the community greenhouse gas inventory and one about education and engagement. One option is the energy audit, so if we get that done before April fifth, then that's fine.
This building.
For this building, no, just for this building. And if not, then I have to write back government operations greenhouse gas inventory. Otherwise, we don't have. A priority one. So, so it's true. I was not planning on writing two reports. I figured this out on like Tuesday. Okay, so can you say it again slower? So the, the, we, you've added up everything that we've, that we've got. We are how many short of bronze?
I added up sixty-four plus the thirty when we did two resolutions, so that's ninety-four.
We were at. We would be fine. If I, it's just, it's because of this. It's not about the points anymore. It's about this priority, making us do things that I wouldn't, that otherwise we wouldn't need a point for. Okay. Um, so if we can really move the energy on it, but I don't want to count on that. Um, because if, you know, the contracting is slow or they can't schedule last or they come here and they realize that. The blower doesn't work, like you could imagine all these ways and, and you only can apply. I think the next one is sometime in the summer. Um, they only have certain windows of when you can apply. So um, I'm gonna find out what it's, what it's like to do these, um, these reports. Um, that have the Valley Regional Council provide the template and they have some of the data and they do webinars and like they provide a lot of support. So my hope is that it's, it's, and we're a small, you know, we're really small. So I hope that it's pretty straightforward. I'll also talk with task force members and see if anyone can jump in. Um, these are not going to be. Well, maybe Alex can, can make a pretty cover page for it or something like that, so we'll make it look fancy. So, but I, but I think that the piece that I, that I need help on is to get the. Um, the bills and the, you know, the utility information and that I can do the work with it. I just need the access to the. You know, our utility.
Was Martha Upton part of doing Phillips Towns or was that before Martha?
She did, so she did the update to the um Phillips Town. Greenhouse gas inventory. She did the update. Okay. She said it was really straightforward and that she didn't think it would be that hard for me to do it.
Good.
So um, I, I feel, you know, reasonably good about it.
If part of it's your time, I'd be happy to help with that. I can look at.
Yeah, I mean, you're like, if you wanted to do some like data analysis or like spreadsheeting, that'd be awesome. So uh, so that's it. So that's the. That's, that is my, this is what has been like occupying me for a while. Um. I find it really motivating, but again, um, you know, it's not a sure thing. I wanted to, one conclusion, it's a day again, we're doing this EV community campaign. Um, part of that is where we're counting up how many EVs are purchased and then we get um points and funding. Um, when we hit certain levels, but part of it is also to provide um. Uh, resources and education to residents about it. So I want to call out two places where if you're considering an EV, it's good resources. One is the Phillips Town Climate Smart Task Force. Um, they've got a page about it and then I sort of have great resources on their website. Okay, and this will be, or is already up on the website, so that I wanted to follow that code. Yeah, um. Great. So next steps are, we have this resolution to consider. Tonight, I hope to have the nicer to contract for the EV charger and the energy audit um here for um. Signature, uh, you know, approval of signature next week is my hope. Um, after that, then we can sign with the, um, with the company, with the installation company, but we need to sign the contract first. Um, and then I will take this as the verbal approval for the five thousand dollar grant that will um. Do the, the heat pump analysis and I'll write up a letter that I, I'll bring here. Uh, permission for you to sign it and that will be the.
For this building.
For this building. Amazing. Does that sound good? Any, um, yeah.
It sounds exhausting.
I have a long train ride where I do a lot of this. Any, any other like feedback or ideas?
I'm, I'm blown away. At this moment and really grateful, because it's a huge thing.
Yeah, great.
And the, the thought of if we are able to combine these grants with other grants. How, how we can make available stretch funds farther.
Yeah.
By having some of this, this other smaller stuff knocked out with my sort of money.
That's great, great. And um, I, again, to say it. With bronze certification, we'll get more points for some of the state grants that we're looking at to address. Flooding and another. That's another reason to do it and do it soon, so when we apply this summer.
Setting a high bar for being a trustee.
Yeah, that point, um, I just want to chime in on that, you know, going out for grants is like, you know. A lot of communities actually pay people to do that. It's a professional job. So the fact that you're doing it on your time. Um, is, is really remarkable and it's. You are doing, you're knocking it out of the park. So thank you for, for the work that you're doing.
I will be really excited when we get all this money. Um, and so now are we ready to move on to the resolution? Yes, so I have a technical question for Jeff first. The, the resolution includes the renaming of Laura as the coordinator. I assume it should not then be Laura who moves the. Motion, makes the motion.
She can move it. As we discussed earlier, she needs to abstain voting on it.
Oh, we have three of us.
Oh, given the modest, go ahead.
Can I just say like, again, just to give this context, we're required to do this. We're required to have a coordinator. Um, I'm, like, as you can see, I'm very like committed to this and like happy to serve it. Initially, um, the town of Phillips Town has a, um, a small stipend that they provide to a resident. Um, I think that's something that would be great, if that's something that we could fit into our budget and think about. And um, and I will say that I solicited volunteers for this initially from the existing climate smart task force. I didn't hear back from anyone, but perhaps. Um, uh, a funded position and some arm ringing uh might help in the future. Okay. The other thing is that um, we do need to name the initial board members. This is not um, like a standing board. Uh, so it's a, a volunteer um position where people kind of come and go and, and take on projects that they're interested in. Um, and so just the, the fact that you've learned here doesn't um indicate that they're here for a certain term. And so if it's, Jeff, it's bet, it's better to remove the names and um say. Change the language and say that the, the list is kept on file at Village Hall. Like, I'm, I'm happy to hear your recommendations about that.
I didn't give a number way, I just, as we discussed early, I just don't want us to lock into this and then every time.
Yeah.
Then we have to do a new resolution.
Yeah, so maybe. But we haven't read this in or whatever yet, but maybe yeah, if we want to keep the names, if you think that's it's better for. Cleaner, you can say founding members.
Someone moves the resolution, someone seconds it, we read through it, then you have a discussion on.
Okay.
On the format or, or the word, I mean, that's.
Why don't you make the motion since it's. Including an appointment.
So I make the motion to establish Cold Spring Climate Task Force and Coordinator.
And this is one that gets read into the record.
Oh, you're making me read it. Happy to. Following resolution was offered by Aaron Frymar for adoption and seconded by.
Uh, me.
Mayor Catherine Foley to wit, whereas the Board of Trustees has formally adopted a climate smart communities pledge, recognizing the threat of climate change to our village. And whereas participation in this program will help the village, continue efforts already under way. To reduce greenhouse gas emissions, adapt to the climate, the changing climate. And build resilience and sustainability in our community. And whereas it is in the best interest of the village to reduce its carbon footprint and increase energy efficiency. Reduce its waste and maximize its use of renewable energy sources in an effort to protect the environment and human health. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby shall create the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, CSC Task Force. Whose charge will include following. Advising the Board of Trustees as to environmentally sustainable policies and practices. Prioritizing goals and suggesting programs to the Board of Trustees that contribute to and encourage sustainability policies, thereby. Lessening the village's ecological impact on the environment. And assisting the Board of Trustees in the development of programs to advise and educate sustainability initiatives. That is hereby there, hereby further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Laura Bozy. The Village of Cold Spring trustee as coordinator of the Climate Smart Task Force. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints the following members to the Climate Smart Task Force. Laura Bozy, trustee and member of the Phillips Town Climate Smart Task Force Coordinator. Eric Brown, resident. Um, Phillips Town Climate Smart Task Force Member, Built Town Food Scrap Advisory Committee Member as a member. John Lane, resident. SFT member, member. Os Murphy, resident and PCSFT member, member. Shimala, uh, Candia Thompson, resident and PCST member, member. Paul Thompson, resident and PCSTF member, member. Look further results, the mission of the Cold Spring Climate Smart Task Force. Will be to liaise with the Village Board of Trustees and Departments of the Village to coordinate climate initiatives to help develop strategies to implement sustainability goals and programs. And to work on climate change mitigation and adaptation activities.
Okay, so now discussion. Laura, I think you, uh, were proposing also Jeff Mickelson. That's right, uh, Jeff Mickelson. Who is um also a member of the uh Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce and President. Um, and, and I'll just separate, you know, not to be written here, but he's eager to coordinate with the chamber, which I think is super. And the clerk has made the recommendation that we. Modify this by, by taking the names to a separate document, which can. Be a living document and change over time as the configuration of the task force changes. So perhaps a way to do that is um, the Board of Trustees hereby appoints. A climate smart task force. Um, the membership of which is recorded in the village clerks.
But I just kind of scribbled this down.
Okay, go ahead.
Be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees may appoint new additional members to the task force as necessary.
So leave as is with that addition. That's, that's actually cleaner. And then we know that it. Like, applies with what you see. Does, does the mover of the motion accept that modification?
Yes.
I accept it as a seconder. Um, I have one of the, the, the grammar. Sorry. On the last bullet point under the first. Resolved, assisting the Board of Trustees in the development of programs to advise and educate the public on sustainability initiatives.
Sure.
Yeah. The mover, does mover of the motion accept that modification?
Yes.
I accept it as well. Okay, with that, this is a roll call vote. All right, tweets, tweets anything from you before we vote? Okay, this is a roll call.
Mayor Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Bozy. Trustee Freymark.
Yes.
But the Starbucks is absent and Trustee Woods.
Yes.
Officially passes by a vote of three for, one abstain, one absent. I'm reassessed.
Thank you. Feel like there was something else for you, or this was the last item. All right, and so thank you very much for all of that. Moving on to, to. Not unrelated issues, um, Laura and I have been working um actively toward um access for dam repair. Reservoir on like Surprise Road. We are, we need access from the west side as well as the east side. There isn't even on the east side. We also need access on the west. And uh, there is a property there, um, that there's a, a home there. And so we are working with that property owner toward. Looking at different options and would like to be able to visualize for that property owner. How the options impact or don't impact property. So that they're informed as the board is making its decisions. So this is a, a change order for Tectonic is our, the engineering firm working with us on. The dam um, engineering. Um, this is a change order to allow them to do that simple visualization. Um, and it is in the amount of eight thousand four hundred dollars. Um, any questions or discussions before we? And this comes out of the engineering budget within the water budget, engineering line within the water budget. No? Well, would someone like to make the motion authorizing me to sign it then?
I make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the change order with Tectonic Engineering Services. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is a, this is a big step forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, the next two items of business are. Sort of a, an exhibit of the bureaucracy in New York, um, our police officers who are. Working in other jobs currently, um, when they retire from those positions so that they can. Draw down on their pension, their New York State pension, they must resign from all other. Law enforcement positions for a period and then they can be reinstated in part-time work. Um, and then that kicks in the cap on earnings while drawing down your pension. So we have in front of us both a resignation. By Nick, Officer Nick Costantino, and then a request to be reinstated. The request is for resignation is as of January twenty-seventh. The reinstatement is as of January twenty-ninth. We have done this with a number of offices over the years and it's the process that we have to follow for New York. Any discussion? Okay, I would like to make the motion to accept the, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Nick Costantino. Second, all in favor? Is that an I tweets? Yes.
Yes, sorry, aye.
Um, and then I will make a motion to reinstate um Officer Costantino on the effective January twenty-ninth.
Second.
Favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Next is approval of minutes, um, first of November sixteenth. Um, when there's a business meeting, any requested modifications on that one? No, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I can make a motion. I make a motion to approve the minutes of eleven sixteen twenty-three.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, abstaining.
Yes, thank you, Aaron. Okay, December twentieth, yes, you were there then. Um, I gave some minor changes to Jeff.
Those are incorporated.
Those are incorporated already. I think Laura's had, had a similar one um, under board business night sorta, if the application for an energy audit. Could say for, um, for Village Hall, not for Village. Uh, third, yeah, yeah, third line of the paragraph. Removing the word the and adding the word. So um, I would make a motion to accept the December twentieth minutes with Laura's modification. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, last is managed technology, um, contract with managed technology, it's the IT firm that supports. Um, all of the departments within the village, um, including um, our police department and the technology in the cars. Um, Aaron. Having come out of the field, did a, a very um thorough review of the contract and made some recommendations. Do you want to talk us through? What, what those are and.
We can, they're, they're in the, they're in the contract now, so, and, and the, the company was very quick to turn around those. You know, my suggestions, which is great. So um. They, um, there's a, an inventory of devices, uh, workstations, a server, some switches that are. Covered and I know that the village also owns, I believe, four iPhones. Um, and that was not part of this and the company agreed to add them at no charge um for maintenance, like they don't need a lot of maintenance, but. But that was good just to be comprehensive in case they need help. Um, my understanding is that the, the uh. This, this company is very responsive and I know it's, once you find somebody who's good in this, you keep them. Um, and it's also, I'll say, a very fair um, be um, from my experience. So. That's a, it's a really good combination. It's. You know, they, they say good, fast and cheap, pick two and we seem to maybe get all three, knock on wood. But uh, so, so that's, um, that's pretty good. I had some questions about service level agreements and um. Which isn't, which weren't completely clear to me and I got some clarification. Which isn't, which weren't completely clear to me and I got some clarification, um, about that. So that's like how responsive that they're going to be. Um, and, and then just pushing a little bit on, well, just in case they, um. Just in case they, uh, for example, make a mistake and do something, if it's their fault, then what happens? And, um, the answer is nothing, uh, basic. Hey, that's, you know, they've been very good. Anybody can make mistakes. And, um, there is a, there is a class here that we, I remember. Um, you know, we, there's, there's a limitation of liability, so it's only up to the point of the contract where we get to get the, you know, any sort of damages back. We don't expect that to happen, right? Um, so. And it's, I believe it's two dollars per, two million dollars per turn, one million dollars average. Oh, for his insurance, is that?
And also this, it's not a, it's not a new vendor as well, so we have a track record.
Not a new vendor, yep, and I'm not trying to disrupt anything.
I think this is great. So have, to have a fresh set of eyes, um, and you, you captured things that were important.
Hey, I think there was one other item that Deputy Clerk found.
Yeah.
I remember, which is that the expiration of the contract is the wrong year.
So with modification on the last page to read, this contract expires on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, and the other, um, Kelly's eagle eye caught under printers, a clarification about, um. Clerks, printers, clerks in the, in the plural possessive, um, since we now have more than one clerk printer. Um, and removing the building inspector's printer that is now housed at Cedar Street in the town offices. So, thank you very much for that thorough review. Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, as an authorized to sign.
Yeah.
Yes, like making a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract, uh, between the Village of Cold Spring. Water treatment plants, highway apartments, uh, with, in, with Managed Technologies of New York Incorporated.
Um, may I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That your, uh, motion say with amendments discussed, with discussed amendments.
With amendments discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
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 opposed? Great. We have made our way through the agenda. Uh, we make.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second. All in favor?
Hi.
I.
I.
Good night.
Bye, thank you.
Thanks for joining online.
Got it.